Good afternoon and welcome to the October 10, 2023 work session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, we have Heart of Civil War Heritage Area Funding Request. And with us, we have Ms. Elizabeth Chateau. Did I say that correctly? Executive Director. Chateau?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Martinez and council members. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share an update on the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area and to request financial support from the city of Hagerstown for fiscal year 24 in the amount of $7,500. And with me today, I have some of our Board and Advisory Council members. To the, on that end, we have Gary Candelaria, who is our treasurer, Catherine Maye, Rachel Nichols, who is a member of our team, dedicated specifically to Washington County interests, and then Dan Sbedden from the CBB. So the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area is a nonprofit organization. We have boundaries in Carroll, Frederick, and Washington Counties, and we provide technical assistance, marketing, visitor services. We're able to give access to grants to nonprofits and governments for projects that enhance heritage tourism here. And our nonprofit was certified by the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority in 2006. And because of that status, because we're certified, nonprofits and governments within our boundaries are eligible to apply for grants that are for projects consistent with our management plan. And that plan is incorporated in the comp plan of every municipality that's within our heritage area. Now, in July, we, of this fiscal year 23, we started in on a new strategic plan. So we're now a little bit into our second year. Part of that plan was forged right here in Hagerstown during an outdoor listening session, when the pandemic allowed such things. And you see us here in the Miller House Garden. Now, we're working on goals and objectives that fall into the categories of product development, building partnerships, regional identity, and organizational development. Technical assistance encompasses a wide range of advice, referral, training, leads, even getting down to things like editing wayside markers and content, things that we do to help our partners. This is just one very small example. When the NEH announced grants for capacity building and infrastructure, I knew that our partners, at least most of them, would not be aware of this opportunity. But I also knew that some were anticipating important capital projects that would be eligible for this funding. So this was something I shared with some of our emerging museums, like the Dolman Museum, and just an example of something that we can do in the form of technical assistance to be of help to our partners throughout our three counties. We do work closely with our tourism directors in each of the three counties. We work with them on destination marketing that is specific to our region's cultural heritage identity. And here's an example. Last year, Hagerstown's Bavarian Restaurant was spotlighted in an article encouraging excursions to our area from the Philadelphia region. This appeared in Philly Magazine online. The cost was six, over $6,600. It's an ad that was a part of a larger spring campaign that also included four other sponsored content media placements, all intended to drive tourism in our direction. We also spent $8,700 with Trans Promotion, a Hagerstown-based business, on a 90-day ad campaign featuring our images on the side of a 26-foot box truck that circulated through Baltimore DC metro region, resulting in 6.3 million impressions. So just an example to show that we are investing in Hagerstown as we also aim to bring those tourism dollars into the city. Now, grants, of course, are the most easily quantifiable benefit that we offer. Without a certified heritage area, and that means for Hagerstown, the heart of the Civil War, no entity here in this city or anywhere else in our three counties would be eligible to compete for Maryland Heritage Area Funds. We devote several months a year to assisting grant applicants. And as I pointed out, Rachel Nichols before, this is the only county that has a member of our team that's exclusively devoted to local Washington County interests. That includes prospective grant applicants from Hagerstown. We don't force our assistance on any applicant, but successful grantees are usually those who accept the kind of help that Rachel offers. Our local Heritage Area staff, as well as our Board, Advisory Council, and expert volunteers coach and mentor applicants. We provide technical support as those applications are being prepared. We review applications before they move on for consideration by the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority, and that's the entity that makes the award decisions. Now, you were provided in advance with a spreadsheet that shows all the grant awards to Hagerstown-based entities and projects since fiscal year 2007. That was the first year we were qualified to facilitate those grants. That total is more than $1 million in grants, and each of those grants is matched dollar-for-dollar and many times more than dollar-for-dollar by non-state support. That's a lot of investment in Hagerstown, and that stimulates the heritage tourism economy. And I just have a couple of examples. Let's see, I had a few recent examples of grants. Fiscal year 22 grant to help fund some of the early work in planning for a new visitor center at the Hager House. We've invested in restoration project at the Sailor House. We also have a mini-grant program. This is a mini-grant that was awarded at the $5,000 level to the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts for a special exhibit. This is one of our more recent grants, $65,000 awarded for the Clara Barton Memorial. And you see the recent groundbreaking there. And there's so many other grants that are, fall within that $1 million-plus, and you can read about that in the spreadsheet. Oh, here, actually, one of our very most recent grants, the CBB, was awarded $25,000 to help with the legal rights and production materials for the documentary that is featuring the Jonathan Street project. This is the impact we make. $450.2 million in economic contribution. Now, that is across our three counties. It's not Hagerstown-specific, but it is a reflection of the impact that our grant-making and our operations in this area makes. Over 6,300 jobs that are either supported or created by the work that we do or the projects that we support, and also $60.3 million in state and local tax revenues that are generated. This graph compares our three largest municipalities. Frederick and Westminster have already committed $7,500 in support each for this fiscal year. The light blue bar that you see here are all the grants that went to either nonprofits or directly to the local government or some aspect of local government in each county. So you see Frederick and Hagerstown are sort of neck and neck, right, right close together there. Westminster lagging a bit. And then, and then the dark blue is a subset of the grants directly tied to local government. So it went directly to, you know, Parks and Recreation, or, you know, some aspect of local government. And you see Frederick has almost never tapped that. I think there was one very tiny award. Hagerstown has been the biggest recipient of direct grant support from us. And then this graph also shows our three municipalities. This one only carries us through 2023 because I don't know Hagerstown's answer yet for 2024. But you see, again, the light blue graph, it's just like what you saw in the last one. That's all the grant support to either nonprofits or directly to government, the local government in these three municipalities. The dark blue bar shows the amount of funding that each municipality invested to sustain the heritage areas so we can make these grants and our other benefits happen. So that total from Hagerstown includes an isolated grant that goes back to, I think it's fiscal year 14, and then grants in fiscal year '22 and '23. That total, $21,400, has already been invested. We're looking for another $7,500 to keep us going this year. From Frederick, Frederick started funding us in fiscal year '20. It's been consistent every year since and grown a little bit every year since. That total now is at $33,500, and we are getting another $7,500. Actually, I have that check in hand already. And then from Westminster, fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 are the two years they funded us so far. That's representing $14,000. We know that they're cutting that check now for the other $7,500 for this fiscal year. Now, like all 501(c)(3) nonprofits, the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area needs diverse sources of support to sustain, to continue operating. A contribution of $7,500 equates to less than 2% of our current operating budget. But sustaining our operations is essential to our ability to deliver the services and generate the financial benefit that so far we have been able to bring to the people and the projects of Hagerstown. So I hope that we can count on you for financial support for this fiscal year, and I'd be happy now to take any of your questions. And I also want to invite you to our annual meeting. This is a flyer with that information on November 1st. This is Frederick's year to host, and we are very excited about our speaker. And next year, we will be in Washington County and possibly in Hagerstown with our annual meeting.
You guys have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm always in support. I think that this is an important investment for us, for us, for you to help us and other organizations in our area. I appreciate all of the work that all of you do. So always glad to have a dedicated person here in the county, in the city. So I'm all for it. I hope that we can find, I think it's, I think that we've talked about this before.
We have.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm always supportive. And I, this is exciting. I like this.
I'm so excited.
This looks great.
I could talk forever, and so I'm not going to do that, but.
Yeah, this looks very interesting. Thank you for the invitation.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your work. Post-public hearing discussion, A-2023-03-13-N17, Western Maryland Parkway, Joanna Wu, City Planner.
All right. I'm here to talk about the aftermath of the public hearing for our annexation.
The aftermath.
Right. How daunting. But to briefly summarize, the annexation that we're trying to take in is two office buildings at 13 and 17 Western Maryland Parkway. We're taking this in because of a pre-annexation signed in 2005, and the properties became contiguous through the annexation of two Western Maryland Parkway. We're proposing IMU zoning, which is substantial, which does not substantially differ from the current county zoning, so we don't need express approval from the county. And the record was left open for 10 days. We didn't hear anything, which I think is a good thing. And if you are all ready to move forward to vote on the annexation, resolution will be placed on the 24th for approval. And if approval, if it is approved, the annexation becomes effective in 45 days.
Next up, we have post-public hearing discussion, ZET-2021-01, Forest Cypress Street. And again, we have Joanna Wu.
Awesome. A little bit about this one, just to recap. It's on Forest Cypress Street, and it was approved before for a local conversion district overlay on May 24 of 2022. They're seeking an amendment to their application to construct an addition in the front of their building. It would enclose the staircase and add hallway space and a restroom. It'll also change the dwelling unit upstairs to a more administrative area, but all the requirements for a local conversion district would still be met with the changes. We had input at the Planning Commission Public Review Meeting, but it was more of a civil dispute in with the neighboring properties. And they actually, they expressed that they were not opposed to the overlay amendment at all. And the record was also left open for this after the public hearing, and staff did not receive any input at all. And the next steps are, if Mayor and Council are ready to move forward to vote on the amendment, it will be placed on the 24th, and the rezoning would be approved on the 21st of November. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need this? I'll take it away.
All right. And so we have ZET-2023-02, Land Management Code Text Amendment. We have Steve Brockbacher, Development Review Planner of the zoning administration.
I answered a lot of things.
And.
Do you say that when you answer the phone?
That's your title?
Longest title in city government.
Sure, and at the DPZA.
We almost had you with the new business cards.
Okay, it's your public hearing at your last regular meeting. You had a public hearing on these amendments and kept the record open for 10 days. We received no additional comment. So what we're here now is to find out what your will is as far as these 11 proposals and what you want to do to move all some or none of them to, to an actual amendment, which would result in a ordinance being introduced on the same track as Joanna's cases.
Introduce this month, approve next month.
Okay. So if we introduce this month, approve next month, take effect December or somewhere, late December. Oh, you want me to run through? Okay. Just real quick. The first one is proposal number five for the year. The first four came in earlier in the year as an open, regarding open space requirements and NMU housing mixed percentages. This is a result of some feedback we received from an intended developer of a large NMU-zoned greenfield area. They believe that the mixes that are in the, in our ordinance are not consistent with other jurisdictions or the industry, and they requested some adjustments to that. We did some research, and we found out that their analysis was, was correct. And also, it adjusts the open space requirements and the amenities requirements in new subdivisions based on the size of the property, whether it's under 10 acres, 10 to 20, or over 20.
Right now, it's based on density, and nobody ever hits that threshold because so much of the property is set aside in forest con and stormwater. So this makes sure that there's always something.
So in that section specifically, I think that it's good that we head in that direction for requiring additional usable open space. The only one that I, I think that I continue to have some concern with, and that I think is because in many instances, a, really two of them, so pools and, I guess, clubhouses, I mean, those are instances where a neighborhood privatizes that often. And so it really then doesn't become part of the usable open space in the simplest meaning of the term.
Because you end up having to pay a membership to belong to it in addition to your dues.
Or you have to live in the neighborhood to go and use the pool.
Right.
That just seems counterproductive to wanting to create open space.
But unless we take, unless we create public parks here, they would only be for the neighborhood. These are created by the developer, maintained by the HOA, so they would be just for the residents unless, like with Terps Park at Collegiate, we make them public.
I mean, so, I guess that seems odd to me. What you're saying is, as a resident of the city, if I go to a neighborhood, let's say, well, let's say that was an HOA, but I wanted to go over and play in that park, but the developer is basically providing it for that public use. Who, who comes and tells me as a citizen of the city that I can't, that I can't play in that park?
I don't, I think you're confusing two things.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I mean, use of the pool is a different thing than a public, than a playground in an HOA. I mean, you have examples all over Hagerstown where HOAs have pools, but, you know, not everybody can just go to the pool.
That's what I'm saying.
But everybody can play in the park. I mean, I don't think there's.
Unless it's posted as being for the use of the residents.
That's what I'm saying.
Since the residents of that neighborhood that pay to maintain it.
And the HOA may have to maintain liability insurance, and if anybody in the public could just go in.
So let's take the development, let's take the land across the street from me, right? That's proposed for a really big development. And we have stub-ended streets across the street from me off of Marion that have been stubbed to go to that land forever. And you've got a kid in that neighborhood, right? And that development gets built, and the developer says, okay, to meet these requirements, I've got to provide so much open space. And in that open space, we're going to construct so much, you know, open space amenity. I want to, I want to understand as clearly as I can here, you're not saying that a kid who happens to live on Marion Street can't go play in that park in that new neighborhood?
Depends on the circumstances.
None of that, none of that makes any sense to me at all.
Well, it's still private property. We need to differentiate between open space, which is stuff that's not built on, versus actual public ownership and maintenance, which conveys the right to use. A homeowners association is going to be responsible for maintaining it. The homeowners are going to be paying for maintaining it. They may have to maintain liability insurance. It's private, it's still private property at that point. It may be open space. It may have a playground on it, but it's, it's like, to use a more dense example, an apartment complex. An apartment complex, obviously, much nicer. They're going to have a tot lot or whatever. It's private property. If some kid from the neighborhood is going into the apartment complex to play on the private property of other people, it's the same situation rather, as opposed to, or very similar between a homeowners association of single-family homes, townhouses, duplexes versus apartment complexes.
That defeats, to me, in my mind, that defeats the entire purpose of trying to get open space into these areas to ensure that there's open space in that area of the community as a whole.
Well, the code does allow, if the, if the local government feels it's important that a public park is created in these developments for the city to accept it, and then the city maintain it. But so long as it's the homeowners, homeowners association's property, it's not a public park. It's a park of the development.
And here's the reality. 15 years from now, 20 years from now, when that stuff needs, like, fixed and replaced, and that HOA is sort of like, you know, nobody wants to run the HOA, right? That dwindles over time. Then the city, or the local government in general, ends up being the entity that's looked to, to absorb that obligation.
It hasn't happened so far at Hager's Crossing, which has been there for more than 20 years. But I, I see what you're saying, but we can't force a private park to be a public park. I mean, it could be in some cases, these neighborhoods, they don't care if you come in and play on the fields and do all that kind of stuff. I don't know if that happens now at Hager's Crossing, because really, who could walk there except the residents who live there?
It's just residents.
Yeah. It would be different in Unger because it's going to be surrounded by other neighborhoods.
I mean, it's going to surround it by a lot of neighborhoods, N and L.
What it boils down to is the philosophy of, if it's going to be open to the general public, then it should be supported by the general public, not by a very small subset of the general public who are stuck in that development paying for the homeowners association.
I agree.
And we did take in the park at Collegiate Acres, even though really probably only the Collegiate Acres residents use it. It is a public park maintained by the city.
And that's built into the subdivision ordinance. It could go either way. Either you create private open space, or if this body is willing to accept it, and that's discretionary act on your part.
Yeah, I guess that's the important part. Like, yeah, like out at Hager's Crossing, I would look that, go, yeah, I mean, that's, you know. But that's me looking at it today, not what's beyond, you know what I mean? That's going to be developed. When I look at Unger, everything's already around it. So in that instance, I would say, well, yeah, I mean, you know, kids from Virginia Avenue, kids from Oak Ridge, I mean, it's not going to be, all we're going to be is going out and, you know.
Unger is probably a good example to use on that because you have a situation where the development's kind of on the edge of town. There are no other city municipal parks in the immediate vicinity, similar to Collegiate. So as that development builds out, maybe this body would be interested, and I'm not speaking for the Rights Department, don't get me wrong, but as part of that development process, maybe this body would be interested in absorbing the open space as a city park, to have a park in that portion of the city. And I'm, I'm not advocating or not advocating, I'm just saying that's what the process would be.
Most of the residences in that area, however, are not in the city.
That's true, too.
Okay. Moving on.
All right. Number six is some adjustments to the exemption for buildings constructed as two-family dwellings or townhouses when they're not conforming to a lot area. This was to clean up a little bit, some provisions that got challenged a little bit in a court case, we successfully defended it, but it was suggested we tighten it up a little bit. Number seven is some adjustments to the provisions that we have for the, for site design for automobile and/or truck sales and/or rental facilities. This came up because basically we discovered a hole in the existing wording where if somebody has an existing facility and was, and it predates those requirements, and they wanted to expand, there was no lever within these ordinances to say, well, we need to look at this holistically again, so to bring you closer in accordance with current requirements. So we adjusted that a little bit.
If possible.
If possible. And the Planning Commission has a long history of being very cooperative and reasonable in these circumstances.
Some of these sites are so tiny, it's not possible. You do the best you can, but it's not possible.
And then number eight is prohibits residentially-used properties and commercial and mixed-use districts from installing vending machines for sale of products to the general public, and also the same thing for automated teller machines. And our mixed-use districts are downtown CCMU. The NMU district, you have a mixture of commercial property and residential, but zoning is a mixed-use zoning and allows for commercial theoretically on every property. You've got a front yard. It doesn't stop somebody who has a house from putting a bunch of vending machines in the front yard. And if everybody got into that, it would have a negative impact on the streetscapes of our mixed-use communities. So basically, what it says is if your property is residential, you don't get to do that. And if you remember the, if you remember the PowerPoint that we did at the presentation, I actually found a blog where somebody was talking about that in their community. Hey, why don't we do this? So.
It would be the neighbors.
Passive income, right?
It would be the neighbors that will complain about all the loitering that's going on next to their house.
So proposal number nine. So proposal number nine is to add language to the use chart that requires all new theater or performance venues in existing buildings to comply with parking requirements. The way the parking requirements are now, if you have an existing building and the, and it's not historically been subject to a site plan, and you want to change the use in it, as long as the use is a permitted use in that district, we don't look at parking calculations, see if the new use demands more parking than the previous use. And in general, that's been fine for twenty years. We've not really had any real issue with it until recently when somebody wanted to put a nightclub into a property that had almost no parking and was very close to a residential area. And if it was successful, it would have created massive parking problems for the surrounding area. So we're adding a few uses to where if you're going to establish the new, even in existing buildings, and you don't need a site plan, that you do have to comply with the parking requirements. And just so we're clear.
Or the BZI for various.
Yes, I was just going to say that is that compliance means compliance with the ordinance, and you can comply by getting a variance. So at least it puts in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and there's a pop, public opportunity to comment. It's not a flat prohibition, so. And then number ten is to clarify the difference between a change of nonconforming use and a special exception. This is the, the biggest structural change of these provisions. It's about four pages long. We've always had very peculiar wording in our Board of Zoning Appeals section dealing with various things that you could do with a nonconforming use, never really worked well together. It referred to changes of nonconforming uses as special exceptions, which is a legal term. And I was trying to rework it a little bit, and I just said, I got to the point where it's like, this is not salvageable. We just got to rewrite it essentially. It doesn't really change anything as far as what you have to demonstrate. There's, so there's nothing really new here as far as content. It's just making it clearer and more understandable to the applicant of what they need to demonstrate and the board, what they need to consider in order for these things. So it's, it's basically just a very glorified cleanup amendment without content issues. Then number eleven is to codify parking requirements for child daycare centers. That comes up periodically. We don't have a specific requirement added in the ordinance, so I have to go to this manual and do a bunch of calculations. We just thought it'd be good to have a standard requirement in the ordinance. So if somebody's building, and again, this gets back to the previous one, where if you're going into an existing building and it's not subject to a site plan, it doesn't apply. But if you're going to go buy a piece of property and build a daycare center, this is going to be your parking requirement. And then number twelve is to authorize a pre-approved list of street names for developer to choose from. Basically, this is what this amounts to, is enabling legislation allows us to work with the various agencies involved, some of which are outside of the city, to see if we can create a, a pool of pre-approved names for streets that developers could pick from, because the process to get streets named is a little on the time-consuming side. And this would allow developers to say, yeah, I'll take, you know, these off this list. If somebody really wants to name their own streets in their subdivision, it doesn't keep them from continuing to do it the same way. But we find that street naming tends to be kind of something that bogs down the subdivision plan review process. So we thought we'd try to get ahead of that if the other agencies are in a position to cooperate.
We, if we wind up with some weird names as they try to think of what will not be turned down.
We got six you could start with right here.
Shellac.
Ruchy Way.
I don't want.
Alshar Drive.
Alshar Avenue.
No. If you guys ever name anything for me, I would tear the name down.
Burnett Boulevard. There you go.
I like Shelley's Wag.
Anyway, we don't know if that's going to pan out, though. This is, it gives us the ability to go to those other agencies and say, can we have a conversation about this? And, and then fourteen is adding the ability to do uses that are permitted in the CL Local Commercial District by right in commercial spaces in the RO zoning district, provides a little bit of extra flexibility for those mixed-use buildings that are embedded, have storefronts in them on various street corners in the RO zoning district.
Instead of doing an overlay, they just go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Exactly.
Much similar.
Yeah. So for example, the, the one that was in, where the Penny Mart is now, that had Monica's Photography Studio before it. Instead of, yeah, instead of going through a rezoning process, it'll be a special exception process in that case. That's what we got, so if you have any comments?
I have one question. On the sign item?
Oh, I forgot to mention that one.
Yeah, you passed right over it.
That's okay.
Christian.
And you missed fifteen.
Thirteen.
So. I don't know if it's in here or if it's somewhere else, but under the, the three provisions, it, it talks about the exemption. There's nothing, though, that allows, because the signs are exempt, there's nothing that then allows them to be placed within the public right of way. I know that that may be a redundant thing to say, but if we're exempting it from the sign regulation, you know what I mean, that it may give someone the interpretation that they can then place it in front of the property.
Can clarify that.
Yeah.
Kind of thing off-premise is the billboard ordinance.
Yeah. Anything off-premise, and, and we control the street rights as well. Zoning really only applies to private property outside the street rights of way. So we can handle that administrative one before, if we could tack a little statement in there clarifying that.
Go to chapter two oh four if you want something outside.
I think it really applies to the temporary sign one. Like, I could see somebody going up, now they're exempt and it's temporary. Now I'm going to shove the, the signs in, in the right of way, and I don't want to revisit that.
Right. The, the type of facilities we were thinking about on this is kind of like Trinity Lutheran up the street there that has several banners kind of along the sides. They're decorative more than anything, they really shouldn't be included. As long as they're not advertising something, like it's not Burger King and they got a hamburger in the middle of it or something. As long as it's mostly ornamental, we shouldn't be counting that toward, because you're allowed one freestanding sign per street frontage. All of those blow that out of the water, so we're looking just to pull those kinds of things out. This would be more, I think this would be more institutional than anything. Maybe if McDonald's wanted to put some decorative banners on their, on their light poles in their, I keep referring to McDonald's, a commercial property. As long as it's not advertising, as long as it's just, you know, art, art, you know, basic artwork like that, and a small amount of their name or whatever, they would be exempt, so we don't have to get into it. Which one was that?
Which is very much a cleanup.
Oh, yes. For some reason, I didn't end up with that in my copy packet.
We had one last thing in our code that referred to them as preliminary development, preliminary plats. It's really a development plan now, so this is a cleanup.
Cool.
Thanks for all the work you went in this.
Hopefully, we won't be back for about another year. We've done two this year, hopefully I'm going to, we're going to tone it down for a while. So everything as proposed then, with that one possible tweak? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, that restoration of deputy fire chief position, and we have Chief Stephen Long. Hi, Chief.
Good afternoon, everyone. I was last here on this matter, I believe, August fifteenth. Council raised some important questions about whether the position would be available to external candidates. At that time, it was not, so we have amended, as you see in your memo dated today, to that effect that it's available for internal and external candidates. The second significant change is that the HR Director and the City Administrator and I agreed that it would only be appropriate for the newly appointed Fire Chief to participate in the process to appoint a deputy fire chief. So Michelle asked me to pass on that she intends to fund this position out of contingency operating budget for the remainder of FY twenty-three, and then it would be automatically rolled over to FY twenty-four budget. So this funded, and we've made the changes that were raised in the August work session, as reflected in my memo. There were no changes to the job description itself.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Pretty good far working out all around Wood Drive right now, John F. Kennedy Drive. Yeah, it says listed right here, so I'm going to head out. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Your service and leadership.
What? Did you have a question?
You done? Oh, yeah.
Why are we whispering, for God's sake?
No, because he's not, yeah. Do that regular, we'll do it in regular.
All right. Next up, we have cities legislative priorities, twenty twenty, four twenty twenty-four, Maryland General Assembly, Scott.
Just a short revisit on this to see if you all had anything to add as far as legislative priorities for twenty twenty-four. The previous session priorities, going back from more fieldhouse capital funding, three to four million dollar ask of the capital budget there. We'll also go back with tax sale unpaid abatements and liens on vacant properties. As I stated, we're going in with Frostburg and Cumberland on that legislation to make sure that everyone is abundantly clear that these are for vacant properties that have, even though the taxes are paid, they have years of unpaid abatements and liens on them. And I think from what we understand, that's going to be a pretty favorable outcome to that legislation. Other subject areas that we're hearing, well, except for the, the first two, which are specific to us, the capital funding for the Hagerstown Fire Department Headquarters at four forty-one South Potomac Street, going in asking for, for some funding on that, as well as the relocation and expansion of, of the community gardens that are going to be displaced because of four forty-one South Potomac. If you all are okay with that, we can put some, we can put some ask amounts in there and see, see how that goes. The remainder of these are subject areas for other legislation that you can either decide that we want to work as, work with the delegation to sponsor, or that when the time comes, and I'm fairly sure that most of these are going to be brought forth by other municipalities that we could support as well. The requirement for certification and registration of sober houses. The requirement for certification and registration of property management companies. Public identification of principles and, and LLC filings for business licenses. That one came up back in twenty eighteen and was, and was, did not make it out of committee. Basically, what you try to, what, what the, the thought is behind this is when it comes to predatory LLCs that come in and try to scarf up large amounts of, of properties, especially in blighted areas or the tax sale, you don't know who they are. They could be local, a lot of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, unfortunately, they are from nowhere near here. And it really gums up the ability to move some of these properties and, and rehabilitate them. So that's the, kind of the motivation behind that. Change in annexation rules regarding mixed zoning designations, as we, as was talked about earlier. If there is not, if there is a significant difference between proposed zoning for an annexation and what currently exists, there has to be express approval by the counties to allow for that. This would get, this would basically get rid of that, or make it to where the five-day rule would not exist. And then last, making Washington County a Shaw County in relation to tax differential communications, which means the county shall meet with each municipality every year to talk about the tax differential. Ninety-three municipalities in Maryland currently operate where the county does not have to confer with them at all about what their tax differential is. And I think we're going to see something come out, definitely on this, from the annexation, I'm not so sure about. But I definitely think you'll see something from the Eastern Shore that'll be brought forth related to, to tax differential. I was amazed at how much interest that has developed over, over that within the state. And just for your information, MML's legislative priorities, they go to vote next week to the general membership, have made it through the board. The establishment of tourism zones, which will allow municipalities, if they so desire, to establish zones to where certain incentives will be provided based upon their ability to promote tourism and bring folks into, into the particular area. Civilianizing the review and sighting of speed camera violations to, right now, you have to be a sworn officer to be able to review and sight off of speed camera video. It takes a significant amount of time to do that, it takes sworn officers off the street. This would allow civilians to be able to do that with the appropriate training and all that good stuff, and allow cops to get back on the street where they, where they belong. And then lastly, establishment of a task force studying revenue enhancements and other sources of revenue for municipalities. This will, this kind of generated out of the cannabis revenue sharing that we get as municipalities. This would also look to bring the legislature in and some state departments to look at sales tax, sin taxes, and the ability to expand our ability to collect revenue beyond relying so much on, on real estate property and personal property taxes. That would be similar to what many, many other states, West Virginia, Pennsylvania included, are able to draw down to municipalities. So just want, if you all had, had since October, or since September, had come up with anything else you were looking for to add to this list? I think definitely these two that are on the screen right now, obviously the fieldhouse and then the tax sale are certainly two that I would hope you all could, could stand behind. And then if there's anything from the, the potentials or anything that's not on this list, I'm happy to take and make sure the community coalition is aware of it, as well as, as well as our lobbyists and rest of the delegation.
Yeah, I feel really strongly about the regulation of sober houses.
Okay.
I've been hearing that a lot.
Yep.
It's really, especially here, it's very impactful.
All right, I will, I will draw something up for that. Can do that?
For sure. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Really with property management companies, the, what you find is they're just looking for real estate, someone with a real estate brokerage license to be part of the property management company instead of just, you know, Joe and Moe deciding, hey, we're going to manage properties. We don't know, you know, we live in a property and that's the only qualification we have. That's where, that's where that comes from. One last thing I'll just add, and it's, it's really starting to amp up a little bit. It's this whole concept of rent stabilization. I didn't put that on here, but I think what, what you're going to find, there's going to be legislation out there that's going to create, going to look to create some sort of a process where it's going to act like, like amount of assessments can only go up as high as five percent per, per tax year. That's what you're going to see rent stabilization legislation look like to where rents can only raise so much in a particular area based upon per capita income. I, I did not add that here, but I am pretty certain there's going to be someone, some delegation put that forward, probably more towards the city. Not necessarily a bad thing, especially with, especially with ERAP money drying up and the lack of funding for affordable, for affordable housing, rental, rental assistance. You're going to see something come forward on rent stabilization. Tacoma Park does it, Montgomery County is a hole, I believe, is looking at it. And there's one more, and I think it's Brentwood down in the city that do rent stabilization. Pros and cons, like there are for everything, but I think the way the economic environment is, we're going to see a lot more.
I would be interested in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we get emails of folks complaining and.
Yeah, double rent.
Yeah. It's not fair for some that rent's going up and the quality of their home is not. Still got the same stove, still got the same.
We're going to talk about that in MML next week along with tax differentials, so I'll, I'll let you all know how that conversation ends up, but definitely see that coming through as some legislation, probably pretty early in the session. Okay?
Yep.
Good?
Yep.
Next up, we have trick or treat. Give me something good to. Next up, we have trick or treat, give me something good to eat.
It is my favorite time of year, and I don't know if Eric has it queued up, but I kind of feel like, I kind of feel like I needed some background. Oh, it's looking up on the video, the video is really good. Somebody go over there and shut the lights on and off and all of that. So, once again, it's that, it's that wonderful time of year where it is trick or treat time. We're keeping the policy the same as it, as it has been for the last, or at least as long as I've been, there we go, at least as long as I've been administrator. It will be suggested, it'll be suggested that families trick or treat this year on Tuesday, October thirty first, from six to eight, in order to give your friends, motorists some public safety and idea when to expect pedestrians and visitors at their door. Participation scheduling is entirely up to each family. Since trick or treat will not be scheduled or managed by the city, the city would not reschedule or suggest a rain date in the event of inclement weather. Moreover, it is perfectly acceptable for folks to opt out and not participate. We ask that each family determine what is best for them. Again, if we end up with another hurricane, another whatever, and October thirty first is it. And if you, if someone wants to do it on the thirtieth, have at it, they want to do it July twelfth, have at it. But we are not going to manage it, we're not going to cancel it, October thirty first is when we'll be aware, and we'll have a special lookout for folks, for kids walking, but we will not, if it rains, have at it. Go out there and get, get all the candy you can, especially the more kids that stay home, the more candy that will be available for those that decide to go out. So thank you, Eric, for the cool graphics. And any questions or concerns, let me know, otherwise have fun on October thirty first or whatever date you so desire to trick or treat in your neighborhood. Thank you, Mayor.
That was good. All right, city administrator.
I, I have a few things since we are running a little bit early. There will be extreme restoration work beginning at the Greens and Hamilton Run here in the next month. The course will be closed between November and March to allow for, for the work to get done. It would just be too crazy to have people playing through, you know, bulldozers and whatnot trying to fix the run there. So the course will be closed November through March. We also should be hearing plans soon about a topping off ceremony at the ballpark. And that's where they lay the last beam, structural beam, and they're going to have a ceremony for that, should be sometime in November for that. Okay. Parking deck construction will force the closure of Antietam Street between South Potomac and Summit on November eighth. And we'll have press releases and everything coming out on that. Parking deck is moving along very nicely now, so we'll be able to get, we'll have to shut the street down on November eighth. It will be reopened during Crumpie's doughnut drop, just so we can allow for, you know, flow of traffic. Related to the field house, eight bids were received on the field house, and two bidders will be looked at this week by ESM and the rest of their team, and we'll have the recommendation next week to the full body to begin to commence that work, and also some, some more special little goodies I think are going to be available for everybody next week. So look forward to that. The police academy, we have eleven candidates and twelve candidates now in the police academy, which is the largest we've had in there for a long, long time. That will put us, I think, three short of staffing levels. So we have definitely made a, a nice comeback there, let's hope all, everybody gets through it. And it's looking, it's looking real good there, it's going to allow us to do some, some more things that we've wanted to do. Also, next week you'll have the four part, you'll have four part-time that are going to act as, kind of like, community ambassadors that will work in certain areas of town, as will be four part-time positions that we'll bring to you next week as well. MML full conference next week, Sunday to Tuesday. I plan to be back, I don't know if the mayor's going to be able to get back in time for the meeting, but if I'm not here, Chief Kiffler will be sitting up here for me then. On the fun stuff, BMX Gold Cup Northeast Championship is this week, ten thirteen, ten fifteen, Friday, Saturday, Sunday at Fairgrounds Park. This is a huge event in the BMX world, obviously rain or shine, expect a lot of people in town for that. Hager House Ghost Tours start on Friday and Saturday, seven to eight at the Hager House, fifteen dollars a person. Make sure you go to hagerhouse.org to register, because if you wait until you get there, you're not going to have a slot, because they go quick. The downtown Folk Festival, which is a new event this year, is on the fourteenth, Saturday, from twelve to six on South Potomac Street. The acts will be Kathy Fink and, and Marcy Mixer, the Charm City Junction, and Honeydew Drops. Go on YouTube and look at each of these three, they are fantastic folk artists. Rain or shine, if it rains, Brittany has made accommodations with the folks, with Jay Sussban and, and the folks down at Potomac Walk to move everything around, so it'll be rain or shine, should be a good time. Lastly, the Walk for Freedom is on Saturday from ten to twelve at University Plaza, and that is a fundraiser to raise, to raise awareness of the issue of human trafficking. And that is all for me today.
Thank you. Councilwoman McIntyre?
Just a couple of things. Cumberland came down, I don't know, a little while ago, I feel like last week.
Last week.
And wanted to take a look at our skate park, and we all met there, and the mayor came down, city administrator, and I don't know, two or three council persons. And I found it interesting, one of the things that they said to me, one of the council members, he said, you know, we'll never be like Hagerstown, and we know that. I was like, huh. It was just such a really neat thing to hear, and I was like, you guys are doing great up there. But we always say, like, people say, well, we'll never be like Frederick, we'll never be, so it just follows west. Which leads me into, I don't know if anyone's ever seen it, and we rarely get to say this, but the Herald Mail did such a great article on the amazing things that are happening in Hagerstown and in Washington County. It was well-written, it would inspire anyone probably to say, you know what, maybe I should rethink and the great things that are going on in our town. And lastly, I was approached by one of our constituents who asked if the clock tower could be lit in solidarity and support of Israel and everything that's happening. And I understand that it is lit pink now for breast cancer awareness, and while I don't want to remove those lights, I'm wondering if there is another area, maybe I briefly talked to Scott about it, to do maybe City Park in blue and white, because it's done in purple, I'm not sure if that's a possibility, but just needs.
It is. It's pink right now, but we could, yeah.
Yeah, maybe change some things around to, you know, at least show our support. That and the possibility of a letter that's released to the press or something like that, so from, from the body, so just those things, that's it.
Can I go last?
Yes. Just go over here. Councilwoman McIntyre, oh my goodness, I couldn't get your name out, Schindler. Just Councilwoman McIntyre.
Just two things from me, first, I wanted to apologize for not being here last week. I had a colleague and a close family friend had a passing in the family, so that's my obligations to tend to, so I apologize. And then I also wanted to, to chime in with something that I know that several other council members have commented on, and that's that I hope that tomorrow at the, the board meeting for the State Board of Elections that they can, you know, hopefully they will decline the recommendation that was presented to them to be rid of the library for the Early Voting Center. That's coming before them for a meeting, so, you know, hopefully they reconsider that, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you to Horizon Goodwill for hosting the free concert that was held at Wheaton Park with artists Kiara and Vocal Expressions. The crowd there was all ages, it was nice to see, Jalapeno Honey gave out free empanadas, there was free slushies. My grandma is a nap, is now a fan of Mr. Eddie Peters, so she said anytime he's performing, to let her know. And I told him that, she says she don't care if it's raining or cold, she just loves how he sings. And also, just, it was nice seeing a stage at the park and, and the whole theatrics of it all. And Eric Decker was there, so we discussed while at the park, like, about placement of a stage, because that is coming a part of the Wheaton Park Improvement Project. So there's going to be some more details about exactly where to put the stage, because the design initially may not look right, but after seeing a stage there last Friday, it gave, gave us more perspective of how the music is going to disseminate, you know, throughout the park and around, so. And also, yeah, to touch on the State Board of Elections decisions coming up this week, I too wrote a letter to request to decline the recommendation to get rid of the library as an early voting center. I think not having that there is impacts where senior citizen population, and they should reconsider, thank you.
Councilwoman Bruschi?
Yes. I want to thank each and every one of you for serving in your capacity, and it's been my honor to serve with you. This is my last meeting, and I've given you guys a copy of my resignation letter. Just an opportunity, nothing's wrong, everything's great, just an opportunity for me and my family to change a little bit of direction and solidify ourselves for future years to come. So I appreciate being able to work with each of you, I know that I've left them in good hands. I mean, the great things that are happening in, in Hagerstown and the great things to come that, that are on the drawing board. Keep my eye on it, but I have faith in every one of you, so thank you very much again, and I'll miss these Tuesday meetings. I will, I will.
And we'll end the meeting with that, remember Bruschi's last words, thank you, this meeting's adjourned. And we'll end the meeting with that. Councilmember Bruschi's last words. Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Council Rap. I'm Wes Decker. I'm joined by Steve Bachmiller, who is the Development Review Planner and Zoning Administrator for the City of Hagerstown. And, uh, Steve, uh, I know this is, uh, one of those subjects where you can get in pretty deep when it comes to the, uh, Land Management Code text amendments. So, let's go to the beginning on this, because for me, I'm certainly no expert whatsoever. Uh, I, I think there's, there's a lot to sift through here, but can you take us back to the origins of how all of these came about?
Sure.
How many there are, and ju- just give us some of the history.
Sure, well, the best thing to do is talk about what it, first is, what is the Land Management Code?
Okay.
The city used to have four separate ordinances: one for zoning, one for subdivision and land development, one for floodplain management, and one for forest conservation. They were all separate and standalone, had their own structures, their own definition sections, which sometimes conflicted with one another. They were written, all four of them were written in four different decades.
Wow.
They did not work very well together. So, what we did is, we found a model in another jurisdiction where they combined them all and made them chapters of a larger unified ordinance, which we now call the Land Management Code. So, if you look at our code, uh, Section 3 is the definition section, which applies throughout the entire document. Article 4 is the zoning ordinance. Article 5 is the standards for subdivision and land development. 6 is our floodplain ordinance, and 7 is our, uh, forest conservation ordinance. So, now they're coordinated, they've unified definitions, they have a unified structure, they cross-reference easier, much easier for the development community or even the general public who's interested and wanting to know what's in them, uh, the ability to understand them better and, and understand how they play together.
Right.
As opposed to these literally four separate documents you would laying on the ta- table in front of you before, prior to that. And we did that about fifteen years ago. Uh, we did it in-house, saved the city an awful lot of money, 'cause we sent that to a contractor. It would probably have been about a six-figure contract. Uh, but it took us several years doing it around our other responsibilities. But, but for what we managed to accomplish, for the resources we were able to put into it, we're pretty proud of it all in all. Um, and what we do is, as we go through, um, our daily work, administering the ordinances, uh, we find sometimes things are either, there's an error in them. You know, we're not perfect.
What?
We, believe it or not, we're not perfect. Um, also, the, uh, the situation where somebody might have an idea or proposal, which makes sense, and it's like, hey, this is a good idea for the city, but there's just nothing in the ordinance that
Right.
anticipated that, so we had to put some, some things in. The problem is, is that the ordinance, uh, to amend the ordinance, it's literally a, a, a city ordinance has to be passed to amend it, and that's a very involved process. So, what we do is, when we get these ideas together, we save them all up, and then when we get a batch of them, rather than do one every couple months, and we're in a perpetual state of adopting and re-adopting, we save them up for a year, and then we put them, we put them together as a package, and we give them to the elected body. And this year, actually, we did two. We did one earlier this year, which took effect in June, and then some additional things came up we thought really should not wait until next year. Uh, so, we're doing a second one this year. We don't anticipate probably doing the next one for probably another year from now.
Okay. And, and that's why, I guess, when you look at them, and there were eleven of them this year, that there isn't a whole lot of cohesion. I mean, they don't need to tie
They don't.
together at all.
No. They're separate and distinct issues that we have identified within the ordinance, um, at various sections in the ordinance, uh, and they could be completely unrelated to one another.
And what would prompt, because for me, I, I've, I've never looked at these, and, so, so what would prompt?
It's exciting reading.
Well, I know, I'm missing out. But, but, but what would prompt someone, uh, you, you mentioned someone in the general public, to even go and look at one of these? Because, as you said, I mean, there, there, there is a lot there to absorb, so, again, I, I know we're talking about a lot of different things here
Right.
across the board, so it, it might be, uh, you know, an, an example in a vacuum, but at the same time, gi- give me a reason that, that someone in, in the general public might say, man, I, I need to go look at that, or, why isn't that there?
Well, it's, it's relevant to everyone, because, let's say you have your home, and you're looking to build a garden shed in your backyard.
Okay.
Well, how far does it have to be away from the property line?
Oh, okay.
So, you need to go to the ordinance to find that out.
Just that's, ju- just something that's simple?
Could be that, something that's simple, or it could be something where you have a large tract of land, and you're looking to develop a shopping center. So, it just, it could be anything from something pretty small, very micro to an individual, to something that could affect an entire quadrant of the city. It just depends on what it is.
And, and we had a public hearing on this, which came two months after these were introduced. The eleven for this year, we had the public hearing, and then there was no feedback from the public relative to the public hearing, but that doesn't mean that you didn't receive input from the public in order to institute the eleven that you're putting into place now.
Yes. Uh, one of the proposals actually came from a developer who's looking to develop a mixed-use development here in the city, a mixture of homes, uh, townhomes, apartments, and even mixed-use buildings that have commercial on the first floor and apartments above them. And they found that our provisions for mixed-use developments were somewhat unworkable compared to other jurisdictions and what the industry standards are. And we took a look at it, and we realized that our numbers were a bit off compared to the way it's working in the region. So, uh, we, uh, realized that, you know, there, there was merit in their suggestion. So, we're, uh, one of the provisions is tweaking the, the, the distribution of apartments versus single-family homes versus townhouses in a mixed-use development. It used to be more restrictive on apartments, uh, but now we're loosening that up and having a higher threshold. It just makes the numbers work, um, uh, better, uh, for making a development that works, 'cause ultimately, nobody's gonna develop a, a project unless there's gonna be a benefit. It's gonna be a
Right.
profit to make. If they're not gonna lose, they're not gonna do it and lose money. Uh, so, they came to us and said, this is what, we've developed these types of developments in other communities east of here, uh, up in Pennsylvania, and we're finding those jurisdictions have a higher threshold for multifamily, whereas ours was lower. Also, um, open space requirements, our current open space requirements are based not on what you're doing, but the density, uh, and that actually, that density is actually quite high, and very few of our subdivisions actually meet that because of requirements for forest conservation, stormwater management area. By the time you set those areas aside, the densities of the houses and apartments that you can get on a property don't trigger the open space requirements. So, we're changing that, instead of doing densities, the size of the property. And it tells you certain amenities that may need to be required depending on the size of the development, if it's under ten acres, ten to twenty, or twenty or more. So, we're tweaking that as well to make sure we have better residential subdivisions in the city. That came from a developer member of, again, a company that's looking to bring their business here to, to Hagerstown.
Gotcha.
Another, uh, set of, uh, comments that we received was actually from a citizen who used the opportunity to come and talk about things that actually weren't proposed. And I'm not criticizing that. Folks have a right to raise their concerns. But we had no proposal that was advertised as part of the package, and when we go through this legal process, if we were to incorporate something, we would have to stop, start the process over again, re-advertise it in the newspaper, have another hearing.
Right.
Because nobody had the opportunity to testify other than this individual about what they were proposing. So, we're taking those under advisement for the next package.
Okay. Well, that seems fair.
Yeah.
Now, i- now, how does, uh, how do boards, uh, figure into this, or specifically, like, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Sure. Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, they are, their job is to keep a watch over me, to make sure I don't make mistakes in
Now, that's a tough job.
He gives them gray hair, I tell you. Uh, no, what it does is, uh, with that board, their job is to make sure that I, um, I don't make mistakes. Somebody can appeal any decision I make as zoning administrator to that board to see if I made the right call based on the language of the ordinance. And there's also some provisions where they get original decision-making authority. It's called special exceptions or variances. If I wanted to build that shed closer to my property line, then the ordinance says it's possible to apply for a variance. So, they have original decision-making on certain things, and also the ability for people to appeal decisions that I make to them to see if I made the right call or not. Um, but the actual amendment, and, and some of this will impact them, because we actually rewrote some of the standards that, uh, they, uh, look at for dealing with certain types of applications. But the board that's most involved is the Planning Commission.
Okay.
The Planning Commission, uh, is the body that makes the recommendation to the mayor and council, and they work with us, we work with them, they understand the process. We've been doing it this way for probably a decade now, where we, again, we try, rather than every time we get a bright idea, go through this whole process, we save them up for a year. We present them a package, and they usually, by the, it takes them a few months to get through them, 'cause they meet twice a month, so it might take them a couple months to get through all the proposals by the time we discuss them out. They'll tell us which ones they want to, to send a hearing. Then, we will advertise a public hearing, the, and in the newspapers, and the public can come testify if they choose on what the proposals are. Then, the Planning Commission takes that testimony, and then they make a recommendation to the mayor and council. Maybe, based on the testimony, they'll say, well, let's leave that out and just send these onto the mayor and council. So, what will end up happening is, is they vote on a package. Let's say there's ten proposals. Maybe they'll pull two of them out. Well, we're gonna send these eight as a package to the mayor and council. And then, the process starts all over again, where then we come and we brief the mayor and council what the Planning Commission recommends. We advertise another public hearing that the mayor and council would hold. We, again, take public testimony. Then, after that, and I, usually, they give a ten-day period to get additional comments, and, uh, then the mayor and council, which is what they did today, we came and sat down with them and said, okay, you've had your public hearing. Here are the eleven proposals. What do you want us to do? Um, do you wanna adopt all of them? Some of them? None of them?
Right.
What do you wanna do? And today, they decided to move forward with all of them, with one possible minor tweak of one of them. So, the next step will be that, uh, we will draft up a, an ordinance that, uh, amends the zoning ordinance. And, uh, what will happen is, is if, once that's introduced at the end of the month, presumably, they'll vote to adopt it, adopt it on November twenty-first, and it will take effect somewhere in the general vicinity of Christmas
Okay.
toward the end of the year. And then, during that time, then we go into a marathon, updating our ordinances, uh, process, 'cause then we have to take all of the strikeout and the taken-out-and-put-in language that's in this odd structure that we have here in this document, and actually ru- put it into the final
Right.
product that we post to the internet and have printed copies of, so people can look at it, and this is what the official law is, and have that ready by the, the date that it takes effect in December.
How often, uh, does the BZA meet? How often does the Planning Commission meet?
The Planning Commission meets twice a month. Uh, they meet on the, uh, second and last Wednesdays of the month.
Okay.
Uh, on the second Wednesday, it's at four P.M. On the last Wednesday of the month, it is at, uh, seven P.M. However, in November and December, because of the holidays, they only meet month, once in, uh, during those months, and it's toward the middle of the month. So, the schedule does get a little messed up toward the, toward the end of the year. Um, but, and all of these meetings, whether it's the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Historic District Commission, the Planning Commission, they're all public meetings, and folks can come and sit and, and listen and find out what's going on. Uh, public's more than welcome to attend. The Board of Zoning Appeals, excuse me, meets on the second Thursday of the month at seven. And we actually are quite proud of how little we actually put them to use. And what I mean by that is, is that a sign of a, of a unhealthy zoning ordinance is you got a ton of applications to them. That means your ordinance is not working very well. Over the last fifteen years, we have actually, uh, took the ordinances that we inherited, the current team that's, uh, in place, uh, in our planning office, and we updated all various ordinances. When we created the Land Management Code, we had updated a lot of the content, took out things that made no sense, adopted some things that needed to be. Um, all in all, we actually took a lot more out of the ordinance than, ordinances than we put into them, believe it or not. We have tightened some things up, but a lot of things where you're like, there's no point in, in this.
Yeah.
And, for example, if you had to, if you wanted to do any sort of home-type business, you had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And it was literally a rote checklist, and the Board of Zoning Appeals, like, was, was like, why are we doing this?
Right.
Are you gonna have a sign out front? No.
Okay.
Are you gonna have any employees? No.
Okay.
Uh, it, there was nothing for them really to decide. So, uh, we got together with the Planning Commission and proposed, uh, a, uh, amendment to where it's now a permitted accessory use. So, if you live on the property, you can do a business as long as it's within these parameters, which are the same parameters that the board was reviewing.
Okay.
And if for some reason, people run afoul of that, then we have inspectors to respond to complaints.
Right.
And what we found is, is that, uh, prior to that, we would get eight, nine, ten cases a month for the Board of Zoning Appeals, which means once a month, which means their meetings would last forever. Now, our ordinance is so healthy that half of our meetings with the Board of Zoning Appeals throughout the year typically don't have an agenda. Nobody's alive or anything, so we cancel them. So, they meet about a half a dozen times a year.
Doing business a lot more efficiently.
Very much so.
Which is a good thing to do.
Yes.
Let, let me follow up on, uh, one thing that was asked, uh, during the, uh, the meeting by Councilmember Alshire, just for clarification, because you mentioned it here too about, uh, the open space requirements, and he talked about, uh, HOA-managed, uh, open space, uh, which would be private, as you mentioned, um, you know, versus just typical open space, like a playground or, or something of that nature that would be managed by the city. Now, what is the spirit of the open space in what you're attempting to do with properties? Uh, I mean, does it matter whether it's HOA-managed, and it would then be private, or is open space just open space based on whatever the density is that you talked about of, of, you know, what is being built on that property?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that's it, everyone.
Uh, it's, it's a complex issue, because it, it depends on the term that you're looking at. In that, if you're developing a new development, the more dense it is, the more there's gonna be need for open space. To set aside areas so where it's just not house after house after house, or townhouse after townhouse, that you have, um, a good environment that you're building those homes in, that has additional space left over for the people living in there if they wanna go off of their own property. It creates buffers from incompatible uses around the edges, like, what if your property is next door to a commercial area?
Right.
Well, you leave an area in between, grow up in woods, and that way, it creates a buffer, so the houses don't have to look at the commercial that much.
And, and the first thing you said was, for the people living in there?
For the people living there, yes. And with open space, when the subdivision is developed, it remains in the private ownership of the homeowners association. It's not public property. So, then the question becomes, well, what if the public wants to come use the park?
Yeah.
Then, if that becomes a philosophical issue, because then- Then that becomes a philosophical issue. Because then what happens is, is that do you force the homeowners' association and the limited number of people who may live in that development, even if it is a large 200 or 300-house development?
Right. To accommodate and entertain these other people who just want to come over.
Yeah, who, literally, any member of the public who lives anywhere in the city or county decides they want to come onto their property.
Yes.
So we have a provision, actually, in the subdivision ordinance that says, okay, the homeowners' association will maintain ownership and maintenance of the open space, or whatever amenities they are. But it's their private property, and they can limit it to those people who are paying to maintain it.
Okay.
We have a provision, however, in the subdivision ordinance that says, if the applicant proposes to the city, and the mayor and council deems it to be to the benefit of the city, that the city can take ownership by donation of the park, if it's a park, into the city's park system, and then maintain it for the benefit of everyone. So what that would mean is, is the homeowners' association is no longer maintaining and are paying to maintain it, but everybody can use it, and it's maintained by your tax dollars. So it makes it fair. It's not fair for the people who live in this narrow piece of property within the city to maintain a public park for everybody in the city.
Right. Because that's what they're paying for, for their HOA fee.
Right. And what happens if, you know, the equipment breaks or something like that, and HOA has to pay to replace it, but it was broken by somebody who lives halfway across town or something?
Right.
So this way, if the city decides, the mayor and council decides it's in the public interest because there's a need for a public park in that area, we can work it out with the developer where they design and they build the park within their subdivision. And then when it's all done, and the playground equipment's there, and the trees are all in and everything, then they can deed it over to the city, it gets incorporated into the city park system, and it'll be maintained by the city's parks department. The city is a little on the cautious side about that, because our park system is pretty expansive as it is.
It is.
So there, we've only done that once recently, and that's the park that's in the Collegiate Acres subdivision northwest of town on the other side of 81. That was taken in, and that is actually a city park.
Okay.
So that's one of the very few examples that we've done.
Now, I appreciate you giving a little clarification to that. I thought, it got a little murky during the meeting, but I think there are really two separate sides to that. And you kind of laid out how they can come together, because there'd have to be some sort of separation in order for that to happen, really for the city to take that park over.
To put it in the simplest of terms, if it's going to be available for everybody, it should be maintained by everybody.
Right. Yep. Yep. That makes sense. So you have to be pretty pleased, I think, all in all, that the 11 amendments were basically approved. What are the next steps? What's the timeline at this juncture?
What will happen is, is we will craft this up into a draft. We'll actually do an ordinance, which is about a two- or three-page document that summarizes it, saying, this is what we're doing to amend the ordinance. And then I'm going to be very busy taking these 11 changes and weaving them into an existing copy of the Land Management Code. Every time we update it, we change the number on it. Right now, I think we're on Land Management Code 3.10. So the next one will be, that ordinance will say, we repeal 3.10 and adopt 3.11. And 3.11 will have all these changes incorporated into it. So what it'll be, it will be a complete copy of the entire Land Management Code, 98% of which isn't changing, but it incorporates these changes and then gets them re-adopted.
Yeah.
And it's, we find that that's just the most efficient and easiest way to track changes, because legally, things, when things change, they could affect people's zoning history of their property or their ability to develop property. So we need to keep very close track of what changes over time happen to the ordinance. So if 20 years from now, somebody's like, oh, I wanted to, I did something back in 2023, was it legal or not? We need to know, well, what was the zoning?
Yeah. What did it say?
At that time.
Exactly.
So we have to be able to track closely whatever amendments happen, because they could change whether something's permitted or not.
Well, that's enough discussion on this for about a year, I think, on this segment.
That's good, because I want to be back for a year.
Yeah, I appreciate it, though. Thank you very much, Steve.
Sure.
And thanks to all of you for watching. For now, that's a wrap. I'll see you next time on Council Wrap.